I mean, he missed me by just about, and he's like, ah, by the way.
I think we're allowed to come and talk to them.
So.
I could try to get Tom to come at the same time, but he made it just like here in game.
Yeah, he gave us like a preview, but that was, now some, there's going to be some new people, but I think hopefully go along. And we've skipped years.
Hold my conversation, I never did like know.
Okay, just like, just tell me what to do. That's where I tend to call my, just tell me what to do when you want to.
It's starting with the first cable.
Kurt, catch.
Oh, okay.
Can I throw it for real?
It just grows and grows and grows over.
It's been sitting on my desk. Well.
Oh, no, we're, we're just, you know, we've just got the money invested right there.
Yeah.
Know where you are. Called very glad. Supporting and times.
I mean, I've brought it on.
We're talking about.
But it's, it's weird that we have approved it, but we never approved it.
Seven years of court.
We never approved it at all. When they ordinance in one place.
Yeah.
And if you didn't know that it exists, you don't know.
So I'm gonna say, why don't we incorporate that in this language, right? Before we.
Well, can I? No, let's, let's do it separate, just so we can do it clean and make sure it's consistent. Because I think the dimensions and that are different than the dimensions we have for commercials. I want to make sure we have that exactly as what's helpful for everybody. So I think it's just, I would bring it under, you know, a new instance. I'm going to say, um, I came across the pods.
This is quite a thing.
Yeah. I came across the pods ordinance in residential, and I just want to make sure we have that in the code so that, you know, our residents are.
Incorporated in this one, the one you're making today or?
No, it's a feature of approval.
These gentlemen are there. We're obviously trying to drive somebody out of that whole place. We're trying to park a thirty-five foot trailer. Yeah. And the guy's going, oh, yeah, we can. And Al's going, yeah, kind of. And then here, here, this is today, you know, what's the chances of this? You know, we got, we had a diet officer, we talked about the gun range at six, eight of them. You know, we came back, no, you want this, this should be. Yeah, yeah, right, right. If you had a building, because you needed, because you had a shop with yours. You know, maybe it's got.
CDWG forty-four hundred. Yeah. Total twelve fifteen.
We're helping out some of those.
Barcoats. Did we, I thought we were getting some barcoats. I thought we were bringing some car.
I know about chill.
Oh, the police, the caries. Got it.
Oh, yeah, that's what he said, they give them. But the Al's not using.
Oh, yeah. Wireless kit was for eleven thousand, we looked at that one. For four thousand, a total of fif- oh, it's a total of, total of fifteen thousand. That'd be great.
But you don't have much weight on it, you at the back there.
What are they trying to put a bunker in or?
Yeah.
It's not Fuji.
We, we, we lost some, oh, Denise. I had two, someone stole some of that, so we'll. What was the issue? And then I was like, never mind, I don't need to know.
Who is?
I just said, I don't need to know what it was.
It's unbelievable. Their shops all are nice. They got them nice clothes. Hardly, stuff like that. And, uh. There's deer. Everybody. Walking out of.
Where do you vote?
And they walk along with you. Yeah. Oh. One of our, one of our friends came out of his shop.
Oh, all right, yeah. Oh, yeah, I see, I know why.
They wanted to work there with one of our partners. And they should have some down this way during their.
Oh, yeah.
I was looking at one. He ran it out of her hand.
Very quiet. Oh, there you go, they just.
Oh, that, that was a huge party.
Been going well here? Ox, she ain't gonna look at my bear against Ox. No. No.
Yeah.
Everything is that we did.
Pick.
I mean, he even there has been up there off of Harlem for, uh.
Yeah, they got, they got lucky again. The kids, the young kids kicked it over.
Sounds like, yeah, there you go.
Hunter.
Yeah, they set train along.
That's sound.
Good cover for them.
Rick. Take a seat.
Let's finish this.
What does Emmett do it?
He's a, believe in that one sex.
No, it's seven thirty. That's all, that's not on time.
Oh, man. You ready?
Okay, if we could get started, I'd like to have everybody help me with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which sustains, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call, please.
Alderman Keeler.
Here.
Alderman McCarthy.
Here.
Alderman Wolf.
Here.
Alderman Coons.
Here.
Alderman Emmett.
Here.
Alderman Stewie.
Here.
Mayor, sir, you have a quorum.
Okay. We'll go into announcements for October fourteenth, twenty twenty-five. The Oak Forest Crestwood Area Chamber of Commerce Community Expo is on Saturday, October eighteenth, at nine AM to noon at Arbor Park Middle School. The free expo includes exhibitors, iPass on demand, raffles and giveaways, and kids costume party at ten AM. For details, go to oakforestcrestwoodchamber.org. Join us for a community tree planting event near South Suburban College Oak Forest Campus on Saturday, October twenty-fifth. To register, visit us at oak-forest.org. State Representative Bob Rita is hosting a household hazardous waste recycling event for all Illinois residents on Saturday, October twenty-fifth, from eight AM to three PM at Ozinga Field in Crestwood at forty-eleven South Kenton Avenue. Registration is required. For details, call Representative Rita's office at seven oh eight, three nine six, two eight two two. Trick or treat hours are from three to eight PM on Friday, October thirty-first, rain or shine. Remember, as people are going into their homes late at night, some of them may not open their doors for eight o'clock, but that's what the, that's what the time is that we have for right now. Okay, Stag High School's music booster invites you to its Art for the Season Arts and Crafts Festival on November fifteenth, at nine AM to four PM, and November sixteenth, from ten AM to three PM. The event includes vendor booths, lunch, and food samplings, raffles, and entertainment. A mission to that event is three dollars. Bremen Township is a drop-off center for the annual Bremen High School National Honor Society and Student Council's Stuff the Bus Food Drive. Canned goods and other non-perishable items can be dropped off at one fifty-three fifty Oak Park Avenue until November twenty-first. Any other announcements from the Aldermen? Okay, we'll head into citizens' participation. If anybody would like to come and address the city council, we follow the policy and come up. We need to have your name and address, and your time limit is three minutes. Anybody want to address the city council at this point? Come right up. Just give us your name and address for the record.
How you doing? I'm Dale Zeiler. I live at one fifty-two forty-eight Laverne. And my problem is the police department. The stop signs on my block and other blocks, nobody stops, especially when they're doing Cicero Avenue. They use that as a cross through. I've seen them forty, fifty miles an hour right through all the stop signs. It's ridiculous. And I've talked to four different cops. They say they'll come over there and sit in the park. Right by the park there, they run those stop signs. And the kids on the scooters, they're wrong too, but they're gonna meet. They blow the stop signs, but the cars are gonna hit them. The other thing too is, I was out one night on the neighborhood bars. There's a problem. Bartender calls. They sent one cop to a bar fight. That was like two months ago. The other day, a woman that just had her driveway done, they parked on their sidewalk, the woman couldn't get across the sidewalk with her dog. Five squads show up for a car that's parked on the sidewalk. You can't get them to do nothing. I've asked them multiple times to do something about the stop signs. So what do you do? You take the stop signs down? I'd like an answer. I mean, do I throw shovels at them? I don't know. But it's ridiculous. I've lived there thirty-three years, it's never been this bad.
Well.
If you can't get the police to do anything.
Yeah, we, we have a number of areas in town that have issues with stop signs. I've seen it at Bolkaria when I'm walking my dogs. Um, and, you know, we place police officers there, and it'll stop for a little bit, and then it starts right back up again, so.
Everyone I've talked to says, we'll go by there, we'll sit in the park. I haven't offered to sit in my driveway. I got a tree, they won't see you. You'll get them going south, or nor, yeah, north. They won't do nothing. They tell you you're gonna come, and I've sat there. They don't show up. They're just a bunch of bull. And I'm really getting fed up with them. Some of the neighbors in, in the town, they're fed up. I could probably have fifty people come in there. And I don't know what else to do. And I'm not really wanting to come to meetings. This is the second time I've been to a meeting in thirty-three years. But you get fed up with the, nothing being, it's not like the old days. You know? Now, it's like, they don't have to do nothing. And it's ridiculous.
Okay. We, we will address it with the police chief and have a conversation and see if there's any, any way we could set up something to, to.
I'll tell you what, I'll be the one going to jail.
Well, I hope not.
Well, I don't really care. I, I'm getting to the point where I don't care. Because if I'm out there on my lawnmower, they stop. If I'm in the middle of my yard, I've seen them. Not even a brake light, just right through all the way, and then by the park, that stop sign too.
Okay.
So if a bicycle ends up in front of their car, sorry about it.
Gotcha.
It's all you have to say.
Okay, thank you. Any other folks in the crowd that would like to address the city council?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and if you would give us your name and address for the record, please?
Okay, how do I get this going?
Neil Bishop, one five two four one Leclerc Avenue. Lockover from this gentleman. Uh, I was here, I think, three or four months ago, talking about the same situations. Uh, if any of you would care to come to my house and sit in my driveway to witness the stupidity that's going on, it's being allowed to go on, uh, you're welcome to come to my house. I have a question for any of you, just raise your hand. Have you ever looked at the Oak Forest Community and Neighborhood Watch site on Facebook? There's one, two, three. What do you see? There is a ton of frustrated citizens all over this community, you know? Everybody's complaining about it. Some are taking pictures of the cars that are flying. And, uh, I, I would imagine if you would, uh, put a post on there saying, we'd like to talk to you, anybody that has any grievances, come and see us. But, uh, don't think that's gonna happen. I think the, the next step that we're gonna have to consider, and the city's not gonna like this, if we aren't gonna police these people from speeding and flying through the neighborhoods, maybe we need to look at cameras everywhere. Maybe we need to have speed pumps like Chicago has. Three feet wide, that way when they fly through, bottom out, they tear off the bottom of their cars. And then, there'd be repercussions because the city would be sued for having too high or whatever. I have videos, like I say, if any of you want to come and stand out with me, I can show you videos. Uh, the other day, one of the, uh, constant rebels in my neighborhood, doing wheelies on a, a dirt bike down the, uh, street going forty, fifty miles an hour. There's little kids a block away. I've got my grandkids there for the day to play in the swimming pool, we're gonna have a nice dinner. I had to actually wait for him to go around the block to where I finally caught him. On the third time, I walked right out in front of his motorcycle, made him stop. I told him, shut it off, so we could talk. I said, can you please just tone it down a little bit? I've got my grandkids here. If one of them runs off in front of the, in the street, then there's gonna be problems. The kid was very nice, he said, yes, sir, I'll, I'll do that. And I think he actually went home. Why aren't the police doing something just similar to that anymore? They're not doing anything. So. 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 I mentioned to Alderman here just a few minutes ago, why don't we just get rid of the police? We'll have a good county. And for the night, one of them calls, he says, we can't do that. There is solutions. Just have to take the action. You can fight the grievances from the unions. I've been a union man my whole life. You can do a verbal warning, written warnings, fire them, hire your new guys in that are willing to do the job. And once you get a reputation of getting rid of people that don't want to work, they're gonna start to work. Well, it needs to be taken care of one way or the other, before some child gets killed. Any questions for me?
Alderman. Uh, I live on one hundred sixty-first in Lockwood, and we have people, I live right at a stop sign in front of me. And anytime I've ever called, the police have come right out. That night, spoke with me, and then sat there and waited for people going by. So I have to disagree that they don't do their job, and I've made calls myself. And if you were out there with the motorcycle, maybe you should have called the police that day. They would have came out that day and talked to you. I mean, you gotta do that also.
You got a good point. You're an Alderman, they're gonna come to you.
They don't know that on nine one one, or the non-emergency call, they don't know that.
They don't know you.
No, I just called and I said, they don't, they don't.
I have called numerous times, and I, and, you know, even at one point I was told, if you want to sign a complaint, we'll take care of this.
They will come out and talk to you as soon as you call. I, I've done it myself.
I'll do it again. And then. I'll time it, how long it takes them to get there.
Hey, this sounds great, let me know.
I'm sure we'll.
Alderman Emmett.
I've seen these gentlemen twice here about this issue. Uh, the chief is in the back row here. I believe the chief could put a special attention out in that area and show the results to the residents that are complaining. If the, if the cars are available, he could do a traffic survey. And we gotta get back to the people so they know they're out there, as Joe just said. I, I believe the police are answering the calls, but our legislators in Springfield tied their hands, or untied them, when they said officers don't have to write tickets anymore. They made that into a law. They said it was a quota system. It was never a quota system. When you're out there working, in my era, you had to come in and produce. If you were gonna answer and call, you better come in with some tickets. Wasn't a, wasn't a quota, but someone in Springfield decided to say that because some town was using it for hiring practices or promotions. These people pay taxes. The, the traffic survey should come in. The chief or deputy chief should get back to these gentlemen and tell them what they did, so we won't have this, that our policemen are doing something. The traffic survey will prove what days they sat out there and what tickets. The chief might know more than me on how you make, make them write tickets, but, you know, our legislators tie our hands up here all the time. The Safety Act, throw that thing out the window. You know, the old days was very simple. One a day keeps the chief away, not too hard, to write a ticket in eight hours. But when these young officers come on, and they don't have to do it, and the legislators say you can't chase the bad guy, what do you, what do you do? These poor kids, their hands are tied. Bad guy, you know, he's gonna take off on you, you, me, everybody sitting up here, we'll stop. Bad guy's taking off, because he knows the poor guys can't chase him. And this poor gentleman wants some results, I think the chief will, uh, do a traffic survey out there and help him out. At least he could have something to digest. The men sat here between two and four, twenty cars were speeding, I gave twenty verbals. I don't think he wants everybody to get tickets, but if you slow down, the people that are disobeying the law, it was all over social media about the guy following the one all through town today, blowing stop signs because they're walking to school. And that's what I think he's talking about, both these gentlemen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I personally talked to the police chief and, um, over on Briar and Rob Roy, and they did a very good job as far as stopping the people going through the stop signs, and, uh, I've actually had my neighbors come by and thank me, and they were actually enjoying the people getting pulled over.
That's great to hear.
Yeah, especially since it's right by the school. So it was very nice of them, you know? And luckily, it's been slowing down over there.
Okay. Hopefully it'll slow down in a lot of other areas.
Just to, just to let you know, though, we have had other residents from other parts of town here with the same issues. Um, we have a gentleman across the street that I talked to at one point, that we were talking about it. There's been a person from Gingerwood, there's been people at Field Crest that have talked to me, and they want to have the same kind of things. They want to have some kind of idea what we're gonna do about it. So it's, it's, it's throughout our town. It absolutely is. But I will tell you, it's also outside of our town, because people drive like crazy now.
Oh, yeah. Sure. It's all over. Doesn't mean that our community has to allow it though.
Right. I get it. No, I get it. So we'll take a look at it and see what we can come up with.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else want to address city council? Okay, we'll move on. I need a motion to establish the consent agenda. Alderman Stewie made the motion. The second, Alderman McCarthy. Roll call, please.
Alderman Stewie. Keeler.
Yes.
Alderman McCarthy.
Yes.
Alderman Wolf.
Yes.
Alderman Coons.
Yes.
Alderman Emmett.
Yes.
Motion is passed.
Okay. Consent agenda, consideration of the following list of bills, dated regular bills and supplemental bills fiscal year twenty twenty-five to twenty twenty-six. Consideration of the following minutes. City Council meeting September twenty-three, twenty twenty-five. Economic Advisory Council, May seventh and July second, twenty twenty-five. Planning and Zoning Commission, September third and seventeenth, twenty twenty-five. Emergency Telephone System Board, September second, twenty twenty-five. Civil Service Commission, July twenty-second, twenty twenty-five. Fire and Police Commission, July twenty-four, August five, August twenty-one, September two, and September nine, twenty twenty-five. Approval of special events permit for Saint Damien's Men's Club for Wednesday, November twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-five. Um, and approval for special events permit application for Saint Damien's Bingo fundraiser, Saturday, November fifteenth, twenty twenty-five. Okay. Need a motion to accept the consent agenda items. Alderman Wolf made this motion. Second, Alderman McCarthy. Any questions? Okay, roll call, please.
Alderman Wolf.
Yes.
Alderman Coons.
Yes.
Alderman Emmett.
Yes.
Alderman Stewie.
Yes.
Alderman Keeler. Alderman McCarthy.
Yes.
Motion is passed.
Okay, police department. Approval of ordinance twenty twenty-five dash ten dash one 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 six zero, authorizing execution of an intergovernmental agreement between the City of Oak Forest and Bremen Community High School District two twenty-eight regarding video sharing and facility access. Mayor Emmett, or, sorry. Alderman Emmett.
I'll make the.
Made the motion. My fault.
Thank you, though.
Second, Alderman McCarthy. Okay, any questions? Scott, anything?
Uh, no, good evening, mayor, council members. Uh, this is part of our, uh, ongoing emergency preparedness, uh, initiatives with the high school and the police department. Uh, in the past, we've had, uh, video feeds, uh, for the high school. Uh, since our, uh, with the IT changes, uh, security protocols have changed, which requires us to enter in a new, a new IGA with the school district. Uh, this will provide the same live video feeds in, uh, in the instance of a critical incident. Our dispatch can go ahead and, uh, notify the officers in real time of the scenarios that are taking place. Also, what this is doing, in the past, our officers were, our watch commanders were given actual physical keys to get into the buildings. Uh, they have since changed. Um, our, our key fobs, we're gonna have access to the buildings through the officer's individual key fob, so there'll be no delay in that whatsoever. Uh, so with that, I ask for your approval in entering this IGA with District two twenty-eight.
Okay, any questions? Roll call, please.
Alderman Emmett.
Yes.
Alderman Stewie.
Yes.
Alderman Keeler.
Yes.
Alderman McCarthy.
Yes.
Alderman Wolf.
Yes.
Alderman Coons.
Yes.
Motion is passed.
Okay. Motion to approve the purchase of thirteen Cradle Point R nine eighty AVL routers through Verizon Wireless Government Pricing Program at eleven thousand one hundred and fifteen dollars and thirteen new antennas from CDWG for four thousand four hundred and forty dollars and two cents. Project total for both fifteen thousand five hundred and fifty-five dollars and two cents for the police squad vehicles. Need a motion? Alderman Stewie made the motion, need a second. Alderman Coons made the second. Scott?
Yeah, so, uh, we currently utilize thirteen USB modems to transfer data and video from our vehicles to the dispatch center and also our servers uh, for our body, body cams and in-car cameras. Uh, those USB modems have, uh, reached their end of life and becoming unserviceable to replace. Uh, so with that, and, and actually with those, with those USB modems, we have transferred those from car to car as we have replaced the cars. Uh, with, so with that, we're gonna, we would like to move to the AVL units. Uh, the fire department recently received those, and we'd be, we'd be replacing the thirteen USB with these AVLs. Uh, the AVLs are being purchased through Verizon Government, uh, purchasing. Uh, we have presented this to the nine one one board, and that has been approved as well through nine one one board.
Okay, any questions from the Aldermen? Roll call, please.
Alderman Stewie.
Yes.
Alderman Keeler.
Yes.
Alderman McCarthy.
Yes.
Alderman Wolf.
Yes.
Alderman Coons.
Yes.
Alderman Emmett.
Yes.
Motion is passed.
Thank you.
Okay. Community Development will be next. Approval of ordinance twenty twenty-five dash ten dash one one three zero. Authorizing a special use permit to allow a pole sign and variations for the height of the sign and the location of an EMC sign in the C two district. General Service Commercial District at one fifty-three oh one South Harlem. Need a motion? Alderman Wolf made the motion, and a second, Alderman Emmett.
Paul?
Good evening, mayor and, uh, council members. Um, on this case before us tonight, uh, at, just in hearing your, your title of it, an EMC is an electronic message center sign. Uh, so those signs that you see that light up and whatnot, but we will get to that, uh, in just a moment here, so. Uh, what is the request? Is for a special use permit for a pole sign located in the G two, or C two General Service Commercial District. Uh, a variation for a, a height of twenty-three feet, where fifteen feet, uh, is required, and a variation for the electronic message center sign to be located between eight and twelve feet, where it. Uh, the property is located on the southeast corner of one hundred and fifty-third and Harlem Avenue. And, uh, the sign that we're speaking of this evening is an existing sign. Uh, what is being proposed this evening is the, uh, update of their mono color, uh, existing, uh, electronic sign, which was just in red. So it was just lettering in red, whereas this will be a full display color. Uh, in any time that you make amendments or changes to the sign. color. In any time that you make amendments or changes to the sign that requires different fabrication, requires you to either come in compliance or ask for approval of a special use permit. So background, as I said, the pole is an existing pole sign. A phase change to the sign is allowed, and as you could see in the previous picture, has been done on the remainder of everything but the electronic components, as the phase change wouldn't be a fabricated or an alteration of the sign in order to make that happen. And as I said, any alteration to the sign would require approval, such as this, where you're adding a new electronic message center sign in order to update. So going through planning and zoning, they recommended for approval of the request with the condition of providing a landscape plan to the satisfaction of the Community Development Department. And with that, I will entertain any questions.
Alderman Emmett? Paul, I don't know how this place became a truck stop where it's got gaming 24 hours a day, how that slipped underneath the eyes of us, if I was even on the board back then. What regulations we have, if he wants to display full color LED and just say gaming flashing 20 times a minute, is there any rules that he could do that? I mean, I don't even believe it's a truck stop, but it is. It's open 24 hours a day. I don't think you could park one somebody. But it is. And, you know, that's already done with. I inquired about that before. But can he display gaming, gaming, gaming all day long and get away with it?
You can display content as something that we're not able to restrict, even in his existing sign, he's able to do that. But what we are able to restrict is, you know, the nature of flashing, you know, scrolling, and things that would, you know, cause distractions to drivers. It's not going to be something that's going to be blinking like a Las Vegas strip over here. So no different than any other, our other signs, they have a display period where they have to be static for a certain amount of time before they can transition to an additional signage.
So we have a meter. If we had complaints, we can meter it if it was too bright or something?
Yeah, our building department determines that from the property lines.
Okay.
And it's in foot candles, which is something that most people are used to, but we have a to confirm those dimensions.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Roll call.
Alderman Wolf?
Yes.
Alderman Coons?
Yes.
Alderman Emmett?
No.
Alderman Stewie?
Yes.
Alderman Keeler?
Yes.
Alderman McCarthy?
Yes.
Motion is passed.
Okay. Approval of ordinance 2025-10-11140 authorizing a text amendment to the updated the following provisions of the Oak Forest Zoning Code, Section 9-101, accessory structures and usage, 9-102 home occupations, 9-104 B dot 1 driveway requirements, and 12-206 definitions. Need a motion? Alderman Stewie made the motion. The second, Alderman Wolf. Paul?
So on this request, we're looking at the accessory structures and uses. Within that section, we're looking to amend those locations to kind of consist with some of the things that we've been hearing, as well as just some general cleanup after conversations with planning and zoning. So one was removing contradictory language, and where possible, matching the building department fact sheets. There were some situations where you would have a permit fact sheet and what the zoning code said, and the two didn't collide. Just kind of to backtrack, the zoning code originally was in our city code, and I want to say about 2014 was when we pulled it out and separated the two. So at that point in time, there's some things that left within the city code and some things that came out into the zoning code. And so as we have been going through the last couple of cycles, we've been cleaning up small pieces as they go. So the building department facts could have been true at one point, but we're not, you know, coordinating with the exact requirements of the zoning code. This will take care of that. Secondly, as we've been doing with the other ones, is relocating definitions into our definition section. So, you know, keeping the redundancy out of the chapters and putting definitions where definitions belong. Another change here was driveway widths have been consolidated to not require an hourglass shape. Prior to this discussion, the driveway widths would taper in into the sidewalk and then taper out back into where your property line would start. So you end up with an hourglass shape in comparison to, you know, allowing the maximum width be the maximum allowed for your width, whether that be at the city's right of way or at your property line. So there is consistency on a straight driveway rather than that tapered edge. And then additional allowances would allow for pool to be in corner side yards, with the exception of not being allowed in front yards. As of right now, they're allowed in rear yards as well as an interior side yard. So this would allow you to utilize that other side of your property if you had a corner lot, and maybe your house is too close on the one side, allow you to shift that over to the other side. Obviously, there's still every building requirement that goes along with it, fencing requirements and, you know, separations and all of that. A defer to change the setback requirements for sheds. It's currently at 3 feet, and now this would be changing it to 2 feet, still allowing for maintenance of a width of a lawn mower to get back there and maintain between any of the property lines. And then updated our use table to include accessory uses referenced in the table. These are all uses that are already allowed in our code. Yet again, we're trying to put everything into the table so that you provide that table to someone, they're able to know how to do everything, rather than having to refer back to chapters back and forth. And then lastly, was removal of maximum building coverage. So we utilize which a building coverage would just be based upon your buildings, your house, your shed, your garage, whereas a lot coverage would be everything. You know, if you had a concrete driveway, you had concrete sidewalk, you had, you know, a patio in the back, all of that stuff is still combined. The need for the maximum building coverage doesn't seem necessary in this, as we looked and working with the building commissioner and how many times these things come up. It's the lot coverage that, you know, takes it before the building does any day. And with that, I will entertain any questions.
Alderman Emmett, on page 1, Paul, it says, printed and published in patent form by the authority of the Board of Trustees. I don't think it should say that. If we're printing this stuff up, we're City Council. We're not that type of City Council, not trustees.
We will definitely get that fixed up.
And I talked to you earlier today, when I happened to be on this, a gentleman was trying to park a 35, 40-foot trailer, a cargo shipping container on 153rd Block of Laverne. I just want to make sure the language, we had a hard time finding it, which you found it, how could we match this up into that ordinance? So when somebody's looking this up or resident calls, our building department kind of was vague on, oh yeah, maybe I can get a permit. Let's make sure we're on the same page. I don't think any container should be put on anybody's property in their backyard. If you can help me out and enlighten me on all this.
Just to kind of bring everyone in and up to speed here, what Alderman Emmett is discussing and talking about is the use of shipping containers on a residential lot. The referenced ordinance approved in 2011 allowed for restrictions and regulations for what they called pods, as in when you're moving in and out of a place, you want to, you know, put something in your driveway, you go to the building department, let them know, they give you a, I don't even know, what is it, 30 days or something like that, to where you could utilize that pod in, you know, terms of you moving and packing and getting out. Not a, excuse me, not a permanent structure, not a permanent use of storage. It's a temporary use. So I believe what you were referring to is you would like to see the standalone ordinance that doesn't get tied to the city code nor the zoning code be included in one of those, probably preferably in the zoning code where we already have discussions on the commercial usage of shipping containers.
And that was brought up when Diane Wolf was here. I believe the gun range had six, eight of them. It looked like a docking bay in New York. I mean, we got to make sure this can't happen in our residential area, and it just happened to happen today, which you helped me out. I appreciate you and Hunter helped me out on that. But we got to make sure we have it spelled out. Because you write a guy a ticket, we're going to go over there and see if he puts it on his lawn. Write him a ticket so he doesn't pay it. Then you get a second notice. Then we're going to try to get him in the Bridgeview Courthouse. So that shipping container will sit there for a year. I don't think no person deserves that. We got to make sure our ordinance are tight to protect us from this kind of stuff. And then these people, you know?
To your point, if you want to write something up, you have to recite where you're citing code from. So that's where it just kind of living on its own. It didn't necessarily make sense, and I, you know, wasn't aware of that until now because I haven't had to apply that, but.
What do you recommend to protect our citizens out there with, so they call up and the guy's putting the trailer there, that we can enforce this?
So our building department is well wrapped in understanding of this ordinance.
Okay.
Does utilize that, and anyone who, you know, gets calls and whatnot, they're able to cater to those. But I think more of a permanent fixture would be amending it into our code and just making sure that we could recite that. And, you know, you could search it, I could search it.
Yeah, a person could search it on the web if they had to. Okay. I just want to make sure we don't miss it, and this just happened today. Emmett?
As far as I'm concerned, I don't think we all have that available and in front of us right now to add this to this current amendment, but we would, you know, look to add that into a future amendment.
Thank you, Paul. Okay. Any other questions from the Alderman? Roll call, please.
Alderman Stewie?
Yes.
Alderman Keeler?
Yes.
Alderman McCarthy?
Yes.
Alderman Wolf? Alderman Coons?
Yes.
Alderman Emmett?
Yes.
Motion is passed.
Okay. Approval of Resolution 2025-10-0499R, supporting and consenting to renewal application for the Cook County Assessor of a Class 8 incentive, application for the property currently known as 15325 South 70th Court. Need a motion? Alderman McCarthy made the motion. Second, Alderman Emmett. Paul?
Last year on my agenda, I have a Cook County Class 8 incentive. Just to re-familiarize, that's something offered by Cook County. The city does require to make a recommendation given to them on whether or not they move, given to them on whether or not they move. Close to seven months, I believe, since the last time we looked at one of these, maybe even more. So at that time, council has notified us that they're interested in allowing for the Class 8 incentives, as well as a subsequent one renewal. And all applicants have been notified, you know, beyond the first renewal. They're going to have to kind of figure things out come 12 years from now. We may not all be here, and that may not be the same question or answer. But as of now, we are trying to get ahead of those things and making sure that they're aware of that. So just to kind of lay that out for you guys. So the business is BZ Heating and Air at 15325 South 70th Court. Those not familiar, this is actually right around the corner from the Marathon Gas Station that we were just talking about off 153rd and 70th Court. So this is not for the entire building. Every single unit here is condoed out, so each one has their own tax bills subsequent to, and not every single one has the Class 8, nor is every single one looking for an approval. It's one specific address, one specific business here. So then again, just kind of laying that out, the original approval was in 2013 with the expiration at the end of this year. The tax cost with incentives is 10% of the appraised value. Without the incentive is typically 25% of the appraised value. As that works out, the 10% is for the first 10 years. After the 10th year, it gradually gets up to that 25%, where it's kind of just bringing itself back where it would normally be if it didn't have that incentive. So usually by the 13th year, so that would be, you know, as of next year, if they didn't get it, they would be back up to the 25%. And if there was a renewal this evening, they would go back down to the 10% for another 10 years. So with that, I will entertain any questions.
Any questions from the Alderman? Roll call, please.
Alderman McCarthy?
Yes.
Alderman Wolf?
Yes.
Alderman Coons?
Yes.
Alderman Emmett?
Yes.
Alderman Stewie?
Yes.
Alderman Keeler?
Yes.
Motion is passed.
Okay, thanks, Paul. All right, we'll move on to old business. Anyone have any old business? Any new business? City Administrator?
Dusty? Okay. I just want to make one announcement to those who are watching with regards to our water consumers. Last week, we ran into a situation where we had some shut offs, and the city gave due process to a property owner that was due to be shut off. We notified the person at least three times by mail. Every time, a letter did not come back. Eventually, we did not end up shutting the person's water off. They did pay at the end, but at the end of the day, the issue was is, aside from mail, we had no way of contacting this individual. We now have their contact information, both a phone number and an email address, not just a mailing address. So the ask I'm making tonight for our residents is, you know, make sure we've got a good phone number and email address on file for you. That way, if something comes up, we're able to contact you. It's really important that, you know, to note that our staff does a good job notifying residents because we can detect leaks, and we can detect leaks early, and then that way, you're not paying for water days and sometimes a month after the fact, after a leak is discovered. So we're able to contact you once we pull those reports to alert you to a leak so you can stop and don't have to pay for water that you don't use. So both from a shut off standpoint, which hopefully we do not get to, but really important for the leaks, that if a leak is detected, and every week we run reports, I think, just going off the top of my head, I've seen reports of 10 possible leaks that we discovered that you may not know about, toilet running or whatnot. It's really important that we have your contact info on file. I did ask staff that to take our database and pull an audit of who we don't have contact information for, and we will physically reach out to those individuals to make sure we do have a good point of contact, you know, just to make sure that we're able to contact you timely if an issue does come up.
Alderman Coons?
I agree with you there, Moses, because I had a customer that was in Florida, didn't have their cell phone on file with the village, but they had their home phone. Meanwhile, the guy's house got flooded in his basement because he couldn't, you know, get there in time. No way to contact them, so that'd be perfect.
I will note, as the years go on and as technology improves, there's some municipalities out there that have implemented the newer meters. There's technology out there that, you know, once the meter learns of your, you know, it's kind of big brother, but once the meter learns about your usage, after the algorithm is created, they're able to send you an automatic email if they detect something going on. So that way, the city does not have to make a call. We're not there yet. We did have our water company in within the last month. I did ask that question. That technology, at least from what our system has- That technology, at least from what our system has, is not there yet, so a way to just to kind of, you know, um, you know, improvise, what we can do is we do run leak reports, and we do routinely con, physically contact people to let them know about the leaks. So, you know, I, I do appreciate the work of staff doing that, but, uh, that's why it's important to have an email or a cellphone on file.
Any other new business? Okay, we are going to ask the city council to come to, uh, a short executive session after we close out the open session. Uh, based on, uh, being, uh, collective bargaining matter that we wanna get out there to let people know. Uh, after we're done with the adjournment, there will be no other business that will be done after that, so, uh, we'll have a short executive session after adjournment, so I need a motion to adjourn open session. Alderman Stewie made the motion, need a second. Alderman Coons made the second. Roll call, please.
Alderman Stewie.
Yes.
Alderman Keeler.
Yes.
Alderman McCarthy.
Yes.
Alderman Wolf.
Yes.
Alderman Coons.
Yes.
Alderman Emmett.
Yes.
Motion is passed.
Okay, again, there will be no business that will happen after we come out of executive session.